All right, six oh five, we'll call this Delphi Common Council meeting in order. If you'll please arrive and join me to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the public, that means I can say so very proudly, and to the republic of America. President President Price, can you please call Roman?
Cindy Meyer.
Hello, Lauren.
President.
Jane Marie.
Not here.
Here.
Betty Nelson.
Here.
Maryam.
Here. Good. The council has been presented with the September second meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, I have a motion second on the floor. Any discussion, distance distractions to the September second common council meeting minutes? Here now, all in favor of approving the September second common council meeting minutes seven five five six nine?
Aye.
Question carries. Next item of business is going to be the department head reports. It's in the special board.
Do you have special meeting minutes? You're very important.
Special meeting minutes?
Uh, she didn't put that on my packet. What's the date of this?
September fifteenth.
On this one, September fifteen.
Oh, yeah, all right. Time does, we'll go back to the eighty minutes. Is there a motion to approve the submitted September fifteenth? Special meeting minutes?
No move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion second. Special distance subtractions to the special meeting minutes for September fifteenth. Listen. Right, here now, all in favor approving the September fifteenth special meeting minutes seven five five six nine?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now let's move on. Council has been submitted the department head reports. Went through those this evening, and we'd like to reflect, uh, record reflect that you all had a copy of them, had a chance to review. Department head will be here, have been requested to here for the November meeting to give us updates, so chance for us to discuss any issues or concerns we may have, so. All right, is that consent to the board of?
Carry it in.
All right, very good. All right, moving on to other business, we have Jennifer Roth with us from the Purdue Extension, she's with their community childcare team. Jennifer, Laura, you're in.
I just wanted to come and introduce myself. My name's Jennifer Roth, some of you may know me, been around most of my life. Um, I taught for many years and a year ago, actually today, I went to work for Purdue and they asked me to represent Carol in White County. And I, I text Cameron frequently and tell him how proud I am of Carroll County, Flora and Delphi, that's where I spend most of my time. Very forward-moving, forward-thinking, on top of things, willing to try new things, willing to discuss new things. Really leading the way, and we work in seven counties, which includes Tippit Canoe. And Carroll and White County have surpassed anything that Tippit County has even done. So y'all should be very proud, and we're moving forward. Maryam and I work closely together on lots of things, so um, I just wanted you to see my face if you see me around, if, if I email you, if I come up to you in town. You will be seeing a lot of me because we are doing some really good things in the community, so I just wanted to say hello, introduce myself. We work with any childcare provider, I guess I should have started with that, in, in the communities, licensed, not licensed. We're even reaching out to maybe grandparents who are watching kids to help them develop and become better caretakers, so. We cover the gamut, um, we have one center in Flora and we. Samantha's kind of my guinea pig, we work really closely together, all on a lot of different things, the grant that I'm hired under also helps that center, so we work closely with them. And hopefully have the same thing coming around in this area. Does anybody have any questions for me? Thank you for letting me go.
All right, thank you, Jennifer, appreciate it. With that, we will now suspend the regular common council meeting at six ten. And open up the public hearing for the budget hearing for the adoption date confirmation. Yeah, yeah. Uh, so, your package you guys have. The Form one, which Julie has posted on the downstairs front window, also it's on the City of Delphi website. Uh, today's public hearing is, the statute changed to where we had to do, does that start next year, Mary, where we have the three meetings? They might as well.
In this.
Next year, yeah, so the purpose of today's meeting is to, obviously the budget has been, the budget worktops have been completed. Has not been entered into the DLGF at this point, but however, this is the public's opportunity to, um, discuss any concerns or bring any issues to the common council regarding the proposed twenty twenty-six Delphi budget. Think of how we did this last year, dispenser ran it with, opened up for public comments, Mary?
Yes.
So, all right, so at this point, we will open up to open up to the public for any public comments regarding the proposed twenty twenty-six City of Delphi common council budget. Come up and state your name on the record, please, name of yours.
Yeah, I'm Delphi Jenny's twenty four, and thank you for the opportunity. I have a couple of questions. I know that you discussed, um, during your board of works meeting tonight, the trash, trash and recycling bids. And that was a question that I had, the fact that this year in comparison to last year's budget, there was a twenty thousand dollar increase. Is that what the bid dictated? The bid that you accepted tonight was?
We didn't accept it.
You didn't accept it, then? So how did you come about that, uh, dollar figure to raise the overall trash line item by twenty thousand dollars?
So Julie had to explain that because you have to put a number in.
Yes.
Yeah, so that number is, is subject to change, but I'll let you explain.
We're actually able to submit and be able to have for the hearing for it, have a number, but because we decided to put out for bids, we went by what the current trash bid was, and we knew that that trash bid was hopefully going to raise because that's what we were, um, spent out. So with that being said, when we were in the budget hearing, we decided to set it at two hundred thousand, and it's able to be changed before adoption. So it was to be able to cover us, to make sure that we had that, so if we don't need it, we can change it, and we can, it's easier to take it down than it is to try to go up. So that being said, we'll be able to adjust that number for what we need it to be.
I wasn't sure if there was a accepted bid tonight.
No.
Yeah, no.
Um, the next question I have regards economic development. I noticed that the line item is very similar to last year. So between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, um, we're looking at over a half a million dollars of appropriations for economic development. Um, I know I don't stand alone when I ask this question tonight, where is the economic development for the city? We've lost a grocery store, a hardware store, a carhartt store, an employment agency, and a restaurant.
Those have all been filled as well, except for, yeah, those have all been thought.
So, but where is the economic development and what is the plan going forward for economic development?
So the, from my stance, the, the City of Delphi's economic development has not been a stance still or went backwards. So the businesses that did leave, um, other ones have came in and filled their spots, so, uh, yes, and the manpower or the workforce company left, but that was then filled. Um, I don't believe, Julia, am I correct that all the businesses that left, those buildings are now full again, correct?
Uh, the other building not full, yeah, is the Comet Building.
Correct.
When it's not been replaced.
Which that was not full to, to start with.
True.
It was just a vacant store going for the comet, so those buildings are, and we have Sweet Salvation's, a new business, we have some new businesses that's, um, not sure what the official, um, you know, with the parish house, they took over the power shop, we have one in the corner here that does the nails. So all those parks are still filling, the, the Delphi M H three program is still.
Empty buildings that were, have been empty for quite some time or prior to.
Yeah, the one that's sitting here, the, the corner was empty for, I don't know how many years.
Years.
Uh, so that's a new business.
What's going into the grocery store?
Uh, opulence beauty thing.
Well, the grocery, that's the, the grocery store.
So that was.
It has new owners, but they haven't been public yet what they're doing.
Yes.
And what's going on where the hardware store was?
And they have not approached the City of Delphi.
So the empty buildings have not all been filled.
That's.
That's theirs for sale.
Yeah, that's for, for sale, until they come to, if they want to disclose what they want to do with it, that's perfectly their right to, but they have not disclosed anything to City of Delphi, so.
I have a question, kind of a sidebar on that, did anyone talk with the grocery store owners about a surety to keep that? Any kind of city involvement with the surety to keep that business open because it employed about thirty people?
And I don't, again, I answered this question to a couple citizens, um, I don't know how the city, the city has grants, facade grants, and there are certain ways that we can help, um, as far as the expenses and keeping the, the business operating. Obviously during COVID, we did a, a, a better grant to help businesses going, but, um, I don't know of what way. I spoke with Maryam about it, I spoke with the, the AIM team, of what way a government municipality can help a business fund their business, right? So we have certain programs we do, but we don't have the means with tax dollars to keep a business going with their own expenses.
I just wondered if you considered a surety because of the research I did, it looked like that would be the one way a municipality could work in conjunction with a business to keep it uh, fluent until they become more solvent.
Yeah, I reached out to the owner, um, never heard back from him, I actually went around to several I G As, I went to the, I, they in Flora, spoke to him to, are you interested in keeping this a grocery store? I reached out to Lebanon, Frankfurt, French Leger, um, oh, as many grocery stores as I could, and uh, the answer I got from all of them was, we're not interested, so the efforts were put in to try to keep it a grocery store. However, everybody, everybody I spoke with looked at it prior to it being bought the last time and said, uh, we weren't interested then, we're not interested now, so.
Um, my third question for council tonight is, I know that last year the city picked up an additional two million dollars of debt. Um, is there any consideration being given in this budget to start paying down the city's debt load?
I feel like we made a really conscious effort to cut back in as many areas as we could with the hopes of getting, going in that direction, for sure. I know we were all very, very intentional on considering what areas weren't really being spent and still had a lot of money left over, and I think we tried our best, are trying our best to chip away.
So you're making additional payments on the debt load, that's what I'm asking.
I see what you're saying.
As far as like bonds and.
The bonds that we have out, yeah, we have four or five bonds that are significant million dollar bonds, and I just wonder.
Yes, and I reached out to, because wastewater, uh, utility bonds have to be paid for out of the operating budget for those specific departments. Uh, there was no room within the water department to pay off any of the smaller amount bond currently. Um, I did reach out to Superintendent Vancicle as well, see if there's any of those we can chip away, just get them paid off and get them out of the way, and he was looking into that, so.
Okay.
There's a couple, two or three that are at a lower amount that we could knock those out to take that ratio. Um, but water, the water department this time, the, we've had some larger expenses with wells, generator, the items that are rather large expense that we, we can't just turn our heads to, so he did not have it in his budget.
Right.
This year, he said if he does next year, he'll look into it, but Dick, uh, Vancicle's looking into, if there's any wiggle room within his budget, then he can certainly do so.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. And to answer your question that I didn't get back with you today, there has not been a set date yet on the grand opening because we're, there's still, it doesn't look like it, but there's some fine tuning things that have to be done for public safety to finalize it and do the ribbon cutting and all that, but we're hoping, hoping in a couple weeks, or maybe the end of this week. They were, they were downed and they were.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Any further public comments regarding the proposed twenty twenty-six City of Delphi budget? That's called for public comments for the proposed twenty twenty-six City of Delphi operating budget. All right. Close out the public hearing for the twenty twenty-six budget proposal at six twenty-one, Julie. I resume the regular Delphi common council meeting. Don't get paperwork back in the world. All right, new business. With us today, we have some members of the Carroll County Economic Development Corporation uh, to discuss the future economic development plans and the Carroll County Economic Development Corporation. So James, do you want to, uh, head that up?
Um, Mayor, do you have a free copy of? Of the, uh.
Yeah, that's.
Also, uh, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, uh, thank you for this opportunity to present this annual update on behalf of the Carroll County Economic Development Corporation. It's a privilege to share the progress we've made together in advancing the City of Delphi's growth and strengthening our economy and enhancing the quality of life for our residents. Uh, we are now heading to the third year of our four-year contract, and so to name, uh, layout, uh, updates of what we have, uh, worked on in the Economic Development Corporation. Uh, the first area I want to touch on is community growth and investment. Uh, Delphi continues to experience steady and meaningful, meaningful growth across population, housing, and employment and infrastructure. Since twenty twenty, the city has seen more than eighteen million dollars in combined public and private investment. These efforts have fueled the new housing, supported local businesses, and advanced downtown revitalization projects that keep Delphi moving forward. Our community has grown by fifty-six new residents since twenty twenty, bringing Delphi's estimated population to just over three thousand residents. With that, employment remains strong with more than one thousand ninety local jobs, representing a one and a half percent increase since twenty twenty-two. Housing remains a cornerstone of Delphi's progress with key investments including the inter-urban apartments, a twelve point eight million dollar project, delivering sixty-eight fully leased workforce housing units in downtown Delphi. Uh, the AIM, please, uh, always correct me on this, the bowling or the bowling?
Bowling.
Bowling estate, a three million dollar investment, creating new single-family housing opportunities. Uh, and I believe they have five, uh, single-family homes up now, or working towards that. Uh, and then third, the Hammond's duplex, a five hundred thousand dollar private investment supporting additional residential options. Together, these projects ensure that Delphi continues to meet the needs of a growing workforce and a vibrant local economy. Next, uh, under healthcare access, uh, access to quality healthcare remains an essential priority for both the city and the county. The Carroll County E D C continues to collaborate with regional hospitals and local clinics to expand urgent care services in Delphi. Although our most recent grant submission was not awarded, we still remain committed to pursuing new funding opportunities to bring expanded healthcare access to our community. For childcare and family support, we know that strong, strong communities depend on strong families, that is why childcare remains a critical focus of our economic development efforts. In twenty twenty-five, the Delphi Upper Room received fifteen thousand dollars in state childcare grants to support working families. Countywide, the Early Learning Alliance continues to expand early education initiatives, initiatives, including training programs for providers and public events to raise awareness about childcare access. Additionally, the Children's Garden Childcare Center has added sixty-eight new childcare seats, helping meet the needs of Carroll County families and strengthening our workforce. Uh, next, the Carroll County E D C is proud to continue administering the City of Delphi's redevelopment commission. Uh, this is a partnership that dates back to twenty eleven. Through this collaboration, we support project development in the city's T I P districts, coordinate with developers, and align public incentives with private investments to grow Delphi's tax base. Within the northeast allocation area, we are coordinating easement acquisition for Project Two Eighteen, located near the Ed, the Anderson's property. This effort will enable future infrastructure improvements that support both industrial and residential growth. Along with that, the inter-urban and Boeing Estates projects both receive ready funding, further demonstrating how strategic partnerships and state resources can advance local priorities. Uh, for business retention and expansion, uh, we are always supporting existing businesses, um, as one of our top objectives. We continue to work closely with the Andersons to identify growth opportunities and ensure long-term job retention in Delphi. At the Hoosier Heartland Industrial Park, we have twenty-five acres of shovel-ready land that remains available, complete with city water and sewer infrastructure. This site positions Delphi to attract new industrial investment and create additional local employment opportunities. For leadership and collaboration, especially with the Leadership Carroll County Program, it continues to build a pipeline of civic-minded leaders to, for our community's future, following successful cohorts in the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three and the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five cohorts. Uh, planning is already underway for the next session beginning in twenty twenty-six. Uh, the Carroll County E D C also works closely with the Delphi Community School Corporation, Purdue University, the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce, and a range of local nonprofits and foundations. These partnerships allow us to align resources, share expertise, and foster a collaborative environment for growth. Next, uh, for agricultural and strategic planning, through our partnership with Kersey, we continue to strengthen Carroll County's agricultural economy by improving market access, workforce training, and food system infrastructure. Plans are currently underway to upgrade the Carroll County Four H Community Center kitchen into a commercial-grade facility to support local food production and value-added agricultural initiatives. Additionally, the E D C is developing a new county-wide strategic plan for twenty twenty-five, which will outline our roadmap for continued economic and nearly development over the next five years. Now, Delphi plays a key role in several regional efforts designed to position our county for long-term success. Uh, with the regional growth and workforce initiatives, we are an active partner in the Central Wabash Valley Regional Growth Plan, which aligns local development with the emerging semiconductor supply chain anchored by the S K Hynek's project. Delphi also participates in, in the Ready Two Point O Arts and Cultural Plan, a seven-county-wide initiative to expand creative industries, grow tourism, and invest in the cultural assets that make our communities a great place to live and live. Finally, Carroll County E D C is advancing a county-wide workforce transportation initiative in partnership with Purdue, regional stakeholders and regional stakeholders. Indiana Packers Corporation is expected to utilize this program to connect its employees to job opportunities throughout the region. So in closing, the progress we see in Delphi today is the result of strong leadership, shared vision, and collaboration across public and private sectors. And on behalf of Carroll County E D C, uh, I want to thank the City of Delphi for its continued partnership. Uh, I know that together we are ensuring that Delphi remains a dynamic, resilient, and a forward-looking community, and one that invests in its people, its infrastructure, and its future, uh, and with that, thank you, Mayor and council members, and if there's any questions?
All right. Question for Lord. You mentioned a semiconductor. Explain that a little bit.
Uh, the, for the, uh, the semiconductor, uh, a supply chain anchor by the S K Hynek's project, um, it's been mentioned, uh, with the, um, economic region of S K Hynek's, uh, potentially, and, uh, correct me um, if I, uh, misstated, uh, coming into, uh, the greater Lafayette area. Uh, they have been working to build out a, uh, with a number of our communities to build out, uh, a regional plan to help support, uh, that project through, um, one of the things that, if and when S K Hynek's, uh, turns into fruition, will mean an increase in the, uh, workforce, which will mean uh, support in, um, a number of factors such as housing that will be needed, um, also building out a um, profile, uh, of our communities, uh, that we have worked on with them. Um, outside of semiconductors, uh, I believe this also goes along with the state's, uh, plan of turning I sixty-five, uh, between Indianapolis, uh, Boone County, all the way up to, uh, the Chicago metropolitan region as innovative, uh, semiconductor, um, I'm blanking on, um, the exact phrase, I mean, it's an innovative, uh, highway area.
Question, we're still acting out the, uh. I just got approved recently, if I saw, yeah, so that's, that's a big project that should take some time, and we're part of the regional board, the Lafayette Commerce that has a, a vision of, if there's a industry that comes to Lafayette or Delphi or anywhere in the region, how can, how can the other counties and areas within that region, how can they be beneficial to, to that industry coming into their location? So it's not just essentially West Lafayette, right? It's the entire area, so the, the key component to the City of Delphi is having a Hoosier Heartland, a four-lane highway, and that's a very beneficial thing to have, so. Where? Uh, and railroad, yes, and. Little early questions for James? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Okay. All right, moving on, we will move on to our next item of business. With the, uh, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven, it's the discontinued trash container sticker program we visited this, we were first reading last month. Is our motion to approve, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven, discontinued trash container sticker program.
No move.
Second. All right, very good, have a motion, a second on the floor, is there any discussion regarding proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven, the audit submitting chapter fifty, sections fifty point zero four and fifty point zero eight of the City of Delphi. of the city of Delphi code of ordinances, removing the trash container sticker program. All right, here none, all paper approving ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven on second reading, signify by state and I. There are motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven on second, on third and final reading, an ordinance amending chapter fifty, sections fifty point zero four and fifty point zero eight of the city of Delphi code of ordinances, removing the trash containers sticker program. So a motion to approve.
Motion, sir.
Second.
Or, all right, I have a motion and a second, is there a discussion from the board regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven on third and final reading, an ordinance to discontinue trash containers sticker program. None on paper of moving the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven, an order amending chapter fifty, sections fifty point zero four and fifty point zero eight of the city of Delphi code of ordinances, discontinuing trash container sticker program, signify by state and I. Motion carries. All right, next item of the business is going to be proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Ordinance amending chapter fifty, section fifty point zero seven of the city of Delphi code of ordinances regarding yard waste, is there a motion to approve? Heard you have a motion, second on the floor. And would you give us a brief overview, what this entails?
This is, uh, the amendment is specifically geared toward grass to address the issue that grass clippings, um, went into the street and then possibly down the, obviously sewers. This, this places restriction on, on doing that, we're supposed to do that, so this adds that to the ordinance, which I don't think it's not that far.
So what, what we have is, I put a, a post on social media about not mowing your grass clipping on the city street, you know, if you do clean it up, right? So what happens is, once that gets into the city infrastructure after time, it compacts itself. Essentially, it just keeps building up, building up, causing a lot of damage, which is expensive damage. That's millions of dollars to replace our infrastructure. A lot of cities have this ordinance in place, we had a very vague uh, description of our uh, previous ordinance of, you know, it stated not to do it, but it didn't have a penalty, well, with it, and it's it seems like every street we go down, there's people that's mowing grass clippings in the street, and it's, uh, we're, we're not trying to, to be strong, strong arm, we're just trying to protect this, the city of Delphi from a very large expense. You know, because I seen when I was with the state of Indiana, uh, there was a city that had so much built up from grass clippings and things that had gotten into their infrastructure, essentially they had to tear the whole line out, which was, this is the whole road, had been building up over time, it created a blockage which then flooded the street, so we, we have asked multiple times, you know, don't mow your clippings in the street, if you do, please clean it up, it's not, it's not something, it's out of the ordinary to ask. I know counties don't like the, the grass mowed out in the street for safety purposes, so there's a lot of meaning behind this, and the, the, the meaning is true to saving taxpayers money. So, uh, in the event that it occurs now, we have some language that says if you do, there's going to be a penalty for it. So we don't want to do that, but at the end of the day, we have to protect, protect our investment, and that's our structure, so. It's unfortunate, we had to review our ordinances to to protect city infrastructure, but we've had a lot of people complaining about their neighbors mowing it into the, the streets. Uh, we get a good rainfall, and it didn't wash us down to, to a drain or, um, within the area, so that kind of sums up the, how this got to the board and why it got to the board. Any questions from the board regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve?
Well, when you mow it in the street, because like I have places I have to mow it, well, it's in the street, but then I just around blow it back in the yards, that, that's okay.
Yeah.
But staying long as they don't rest me before I get it pulled back.
So it's not saying, I mean, if you blow it out in the street, quick, you know, like, blow it back into the yard or sweep it up, right? So, no.
It's actually bad, but they are when it comes specifically.
Part of it goes out in the street, so I go out with the, the blower and I pick it up and uh, another, another issue is mosquitoes, right? So grass clippings after and why our crews are out sweeping up leaves now. So we, we do our part when the leaves fall, we put crews out to suck up the leaves and get rid of them, so. It seems like it started to fall early this year, so we started our, our crews a lot earlier, it's on the calendar, but that's
Just blow them in brash holes.
It doesn't take long for
Right into brash holes, yeah.
Again, the, the intention of this is not to be, uh, for four, we don't want to have to take action on it, but if you drive the city of Delphi often, you'll, you'll see it on every street, and it's not a, a small amount of grass, it's a lot of grass. And then that grass works itself to a drain, to which then we get an inch and a half of rain. We have hydroplating, you know, so it, it, the water, the rainwater cannot drain. So there are several factors involved with this, and it's, yeah, it's a detective measure from the city to the, just if you have to mow it on the street, pick it up, that's simply all we're asking. Hopefully, we can not have to worry about forcing any of it, that people will adhere to it, again, again, the the means behind this is to protect the city infrastructure, we, we deal with C C M G projects every year that cost millions of dollars. And you can see the breakdown, how much it costs for infrastructure, so at the end of the day, that's what the protective measure is, so. And we did have something in the current code of ordinances and codification, but this is looking at the, the update, looking at the city of West Lafayette, it's in standard language that a lot of cities have that uh, reports may have to use, so, any further discussion or questions from the board? Yeah, all right, here none, all on paper of approving ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve on first reading, an ordinance amending chapter fifty, sections fifty point zero seven, city of Delphi code of ordinances regarding yard waste, signify by state and I.
I.
Closed? See, now you're getting off it by now, I think you're caught out of the moment.
Well, I do have, we did, I competed, so.
So you're, you're tired, probably tired than. All right, very good, moving on. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, an ordinance amending chapter seventy-six, schedule one of the titled parking limitations for city of Delphi, this is going to be for East Front Street, the south side from Wilson Street down to Union Street, stating no parking, is there a motion to approve?
Motion, sir.
Your second.
Second.
All right, discussion from the board, this is essentially the south side of Front Street that, uh, the roads are already very narrow. There wouldn't be, I mean, it's a pretty busy road, there wouldn't be room to, for cars to be, uh, even in, now, I know a lot of our streets are, are narrow as it is, and you have to stop away on traffic, uh. The goal with this is to, to keep it open with the traffic flow. I know air during snow removal, it's challenging when cars are parked on the side of the road. The, there's just not a lot of room there, air, and this was part of the engineering plans for when this project was completed to, to have no parking on the south side, so. Uh, here we are, the, the road is complete and we're to the, the point of putting up some signs. Uh, we haven't had any issues to date, but during festivals, during events, there's a larger traffic volumes in the city that's going to be a thang where we'll have to keep an eye on.
Get out of your car, fall over the hillside.
You're going to get that car, or eat your daughter a coffee.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Any questions or discussion from the board? All right, all paper approving ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, an ordinance amending chapter seventy-six, schedule one, titled Parking Limitations, to include East Front Street on the south side from Wilson Street to Union Street, state no parking, signify by state and I.
I.
Close? Motion carries. Very good. Next item of the business is going to be proposed resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten, transfer of funds, is there a motion to approve? For a second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, second on the board, give you a brief description on this, last year, uh, each municipality during a fiscal year can transfer uh, funds from their general fund into their rainy day. Last year, you, we were allowed to transfer fifteen percent, uh, state of Indiana changed it to where now we can only transfer ten percent. Uh, we waited until the part of the year to do this, I think last year we did a little bit earlier, just to make sure that we had uh, coverage for any of our large projects or expenses that may be needed. And, uh, this, this is a way to get funds built up into our rainy day fund. In the event, you know, this is the same resolution that we did last year, however, it's the ten percent of the fifteen percent that was allowed last year, so three hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars would be ten percent of our general fund budget for the twenty twenty-five, any questions or comments from the board? All right, here none, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten? Resolution approving the transfer of additional funds, three hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars from the general fund to the rainy day fund. All paper, signify by state and I.
I.
Close, I. Perfect timing, because I'm almost out of voice. All right, thanks to all of our business items for this evening. Yes, yes, I had that on my, I was going to do that earlier, though, yeah. So Julie, you want to talk, uh, talk us through the twenty twenty-six budget adoption payment?
It just, like, with it being advertised or whatever, um, it had to be within a certain timeframe for the L G F, and so I um, talked to the D L G F rep, we set the adoption meeting date for Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, six P M, and I'm following word books.
Yes, this is the same process that we went through last year. That made work for everybody?
Yeah, it's on my calendar already.
What time, Julie? We need to vote on that, Mary.
You, you should put it on, you've already advertised it, or you've already advertised it, but yeah, so.
October. Julie, what was? Will that work for you?
Yeah, you know, we're going to distribute it.
All right, is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six budget adoption date for October twentieth at six o'clock P M?
So.
For second. Any further discussion? October twentieth, six o'clock P M for the twenty twenty-six budget adoption. Here none, all paper approving, October twentieth, six o'clock P M is the twenty twenty-six budget adoption date, signify by state and I.
I.
Thank you for reminding me that, Julie. All right, that is all our business items for this evening, any board comments?
Yeah, I could address some.
Sure.
She, she talking, I want talk about budget, losing, one bonds, paying back. I'm not in bonds, but we're going to pay off the fire department. So there, there's one we cut that off. And then we're getting cut, the taxes are getting cut a little bit, so it's also, we can't spend money on that. But we are, we're getting things paid off, I'm asking.
We, we have to be mindful of, uh, Senate Bill One, which is probably ninety-eight percent of my life right now, though, diving into how it's going to affect the, the city of Delphi, and every mayor in the state of Indiana has been handed this, and it's something that we're taking very serious, because there's just so many unknowns right now, they, they throw out the formulas, but then it changes. Of course, it was adopted, but we've asked, uh, our legislators at the State House several questions, we've had a meeting with the governor, we've had meetings with the senators, we've had uh, a lot of meetings, just trying to dive in what we need to do for our individual cities, and uh, they, they're making progress with it, they understand that there's a lot of concerns. Uh, for a smaller city, then, you know, our operating budget is not the operating budget of karma for Lafayette, so our wants versus our needs are going to have to be a priority, we have to take a step back, hit the brakes, and focus on, uh, what we need uh, versus what we want, so the council did a good job of looking into several items throughout the budget workshops, but at the end of the day, you know, we've had a lot of progress the last four to five, maybe longer years, but we were handed this and we had to deal with this, so that's by being uh, mindful that the packed hours need to be spent responsibly, and that's what what we're going to do, so, or think the, the, the council did a great job during the budget workshop, so. A lot of unknowns, that's all I can say, and there's still a lot of meetings going on every single month, every single week about Senate Bill One. So for those of you that are not aware of House Enrolment Act, Senate Bill One, I encourage you to dive into it. It'll make you dizzy, but at the end of the day, it's, it's a, it's a serious bill that had, has good intent, but at the, at the end of the day, the, the funds that go into operating budgets from municipalities are going to be challenged for, for some years, so. And we don't know that, that might change, they go back into their quiet sessions and, and their budgets type, so. We are diving into it every, every week, I just got a phone before we start this mayor meeting with the Merrick Clark from Auburn, asking me some questions, not even the same size city, but uh, we ask each other a lot of questions on what our plans are, and what our council is looking at, so. Any other board comments?
So I'd like to thank, uh, residents who voted me for, I guess, two elections for five years, so this will be my last meeting.
You don't go there on the twentieth?
Well, I guess there is one more meeting, the second to last meeting, but I'll be on the council.
So you'll have to be prepared for the twentieth?
Yeah, just, you know.
Because we're going to put you at the podium.
Really ace that class in high school.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your service for the city. Council position is not an easy position. So out of public scrutiny that, uh, you guys get a lot of grenades starting at you as, as I do, but at the end of the day, it's not an easy public position. But thank you for, for your work, progress shows, and thank you for your dedication, and uh, it takes a lot to come up here and, and put your time in for a city, so I appreciate it, and I think I can speak on my hat to the board, we all appreciate it, so, hey, see you go. All right, last call for board comments.
Think so.
For treasure price. Public comments?
I have one, just as a point of clarification, in case I misunderstood, Gail, you had said about Delphi having edit funds of over six hundred thousand next year, is that what you were saying?
No. What were you talking about economic?
Economic.
My own budget between last year and this year was over half a million. It was like two seventy-something last year.
Okay.
And two sixty-something this year.
So I misunderstood, I thought you were saying Delphi is getting six hundred thousand next year, Delphi is only getting two.
I was looking at the appropriate.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay, yeah, next year, you're getting two. Okay, all right, yeah, okay, yeah, next year, you're getting two thirteen, two fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Anyway, that was, I misunderstood.
It's okay.
Yeah, sorry, sorry to hear, I know.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
I do have one on this. You don't tell me it's too late, it's limited, thank you guys for wearing pink for the month of October, it makes my heart happy that you're recognizing that and.
Yes, I was gonna get that, yeah, so before you leave, please grab a cupcake. Those are the best cupcakes icing.
Meat salvation, not an exaggeration.
They're good.
Yeah. Obviously, October is breast cancer awareness month, it's a month that we take very serious and, and uh, especially when it's close to home, right, so please grab a cupcake and way out, and what's that?
Wear pink on.
Wear pink on, that, yep, I take up every day, I'm adding to the collection, but we we stand behind every woman that has to endure the, the unfortunate. It's, it's, I don't, can't speak on behalf of a woman, but I, I've had family members affected by this and it's heartbreaking, so. We are proud as a city to stand behind every female that has to go through it and stay behind your bike, so. Yes, please grab a cupcake, cupcake or, or two, any other public comments?
Actually, I just have a couple of questions.
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Chair Milburn, three zero four Harmony Road. In the future, when you're doing proposed ordinances, is there a way you could post what your changes are so that the public knows what you're changing? I mean, just to see it on the agenda, I don't know what the regarding yard waste.
The entire.
The entire ordinance is on a docket, that's uploaded.
So the, the.
Oh, well, I did not, okay, so I did not see that.
Yeah.
Because I did go, I did go to the website to pull up the.
Well, you'll see the, yep, so you just see the agenda of the entire docket.
I just saw the agenda.
Yeah, so if you go to Board of Works, it'll have the packet, the entire packet, which has the ordinance agenda.
So it's not under the council, it's under Board of Works, even though you're doing it.
Council, it's council, we have a separate Board of Works, everything that, the, the.
Well, I've seen packets before, but I didn't see it this time for the ordinance, okay, so that's off. The second one, is there a way you can put the date of your meetings and not just that you're having a meeting when you're uploading them to YouTube? Because if I want to go back and reference this meeting three months from now, the only thing I see is meeting, meeting three months ago, and I have to go through all of them to figure out which meeting this one is.
The specific date on.
Right, then you, yeah, just in the top, just put.
Yes, because I think that grabs our Zoom link, so I can start adding.
It would just be easier to find, I mean, I'm finding everything that I'm looking for.
I didn't know it didn't have the, I thought, I thought, oh, it said the meeting date on it.
I.
Yeah, I, I, I go right to, because we had to go back to look at the videos often, so I go right through that meeting, but if it's not, if it would help by putting on a Zoom link.
Seven people have asked me if I can help them locate a meeting. So we've, I spent several hours trying to locate a meeting from a year ago, because it's not, you can't find it, I mean, all it says is nine months ago, ten months ago, eleven months ago.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any dates, until you click into it, when you click into it, it's there. So if that's what you're talking about, but when you're just searching, you just look, it'll say city of Delphi or whatever the thing, and it'll say ten months, nine months, eight months, until you click into one, it doesn't give the actual date.
Got you. So what I can do is I can start on the Zoom link, which is what it grabs, I can start like at the end.
Yeah, that, it would, it would just be helpful to to find, you know, when you want to reference back to something.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Any further public comments? All right, just one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion, a second, all paper adjourned, signify by state and I.
Aye.
Closed?
Council, we heard at six fifty-nine P M.